Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the March fifteenth Board Meeting. Right now, I'd like to call it the order. Craig, if you'll give us an invocation, kick it off.
God loves us, cares for us, provides for us, meets all of our needs. Father, you give us rain, you give us sun, Father, you give us protection, you give us provision, you give us safety, you give us peace, you give us the freedom to come together and to conduct the business of the county. Lord, you let us be ruled by those from among us, Father, who care about us and love us, sacrifice for us. You provide protectors, Lord, who give of themselves, whose families sacrifice. Those are incredible gifts that you have given to us, and, Father, we would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge those that they come from you, that we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Father, we look around the world and we see that there are very few that actually have this gift of freedom that you've provided. And so, Father, our hearts are with them. We pray for their safety and protection today. Father, we want to step forward here and say that we're going to take advantage of this incredible blessing that you've given us because we're going to honor you and do it well. We're going to provide the governing authority for this county in a manner that pleases you and that is effective for all of our citizens. And so, thank you, Lord. We praise your name and praise that.
Thank you, Craig. I think up first in the public comments, we're gonna, I guess, have two of our great deputies come up and then, and I think Craig has got something he's gonna read.
Absolutely. I absolutely do. This is on one of those occasions. We've had these in the past, but guys, this is, this is an occasion for us that's really special. It's when we are able to honor our men and women in law enforcement, our men and women who wear the uniform, who serve us every day, as I was praying, I was thinking about you guys, I was thinking about our law enforcement guys that really do sacrifice. Y'all are the, y'all are the arms and the hands and the feet of sacrifice all over this county, and it's appreciated. And this Board of Supervisors is going to take advantage of any opportunity that we get to recognize and to, to call out anybody that extra, that acts with extraordinary bravery, and that's what we're doing here today. Gentlemen, this is a resolution that commends and congratulates the Rankin County Sheriff's Office and Lieutenant Heath Spears and Corporal Darian Tobias for saving a disabled resident that was trapped in a structure fire. So, I'm gonna ask, if you will, Lieutenant Spears, if you'll come forward, please. Corporal Tobias, please come forward. Y'all stand here, and I'm gonna read this resolution. I'm gonna embarrass you by making you stand here while I read it. Whereas, the Rankin County Board of Supervisors has consistently recognized our county's law enforcement under the direction of Sheriff Brian Bailey as a vital component of what makes Rankin County a desirable and safe place to live and raise a family. And whereas, the Rankin County Sheriff's Department has been a consistent partner with the Rankin County Board of Supervisors in serving and protecting the citizens of Rankin County. And whereas, in recognizing the importance of Sheriff Bailey, the other leaders of the Sheriff's Department, and the men and women who formed the department, the Rankin County Board of Supervisors also recognizes extraordinary and heroic acts of individual officers, among them Lieutenant Heath Spears and Corporal Darian Tobias, whose training, instincts, quick thinking, and selfless devotion to the safety of all citizens has resulted in a saved life. Whereas, early on Sunday morning, February the thirteenth of this year, Rankin County Dispatch received an emergency call about a structure fire in the vicinity of Applewood Lane in our Robin Hood community. The distraught caller stated that her adult son is also a resident of the home and that he is disabled. The caller stated that she could not get her son out of the burning house on her own. Lieutenant Heath Spears and Corporal Darian Tobias immediately responded to the call for help. When they arrived on scene, they discovered that the residence was already ablaze. The mother and her son were trapped on the back porch, unable to escape because the son's motorized wheelchair could not be moved. Ignoring personal safety risks, Lieutenant Spears and Corporal Tobias lifted the disabled son and removed him from danger, and then they together went back to retrieve, to retrieve the motorized wheelchair. The mother and son were checked out and found by fire and medical first responders to be unharmed. Due to the quick response and recognition of the severity of the emergency by Lieutenant Spears and Corporal Tobias, these residents and their valuable property were rescued and protected. These gentlemen are consummate professionals and true public servants who do not hesitate to act when called upon, even at great personal risk. Now, therefore, it is resolved by the Rankin County Board of Supervisors that we congratulate and we commend the Rankin County Sheriff, the men and women of the Sheriff's Department, and especially Lieutenant Heath Spears and Corporal Darian Tobias for their dedicated service to the citizens of Rankin County. These men are fine examples of the quality of men and women selected by the sheriff and his leadership team to serve and protect our citizens each and every day. Their willingness to place themselves in harm's way or answer the call in emergency situations makes Rankin County a safer and more desirable place to live, work, and raise our families. Gentlemen, this is a resolution that will be signed today by each of the supervisors and by our Chancery Clerk. Let me say on behalf of all citizens of Rankin County how much we appreciate your sacrifice and your willingness to step into the fire, literally, to save lives. Thank you very much.
I can't thank y'all enough. There's others, some more incidents that have happened on the board. But Board Supervisors, man, I can tell y'all, this is because of y'all, whoever hired the quality of people that we have, who always, always put the Sheriff's Office and public safety first. And sometimes, especially nowadays, that department thing, but you've always put it first, and it just, I thank you for what you do for the department. We can hire people like this that do care, that do want, that they want to make a living with a job. Y'all make it possible. They love their job, they love what they're doing. Next, I want to ask Tobias, if y'all, Tobias, if y'all come here and stand with them, because I appreciate the sacrifice y'all make, all the, the late nights and, and, you know, taking kids, stuff by yourself. I'd love for y'all to come here and stay with them, because y'all definitely a part of, of, part of the, the family and part of the team, and we thank y'all for it.
Sheriff, no matter what is on TV and the media and that kind of stuff, we will always support our law enforcement. I will always support our law enforcement in Rankin County.
We all appreciate it again, and I just can't thank y'all enough for what you do for it. I want to get Hope Sheev come up here and all step up.
What y'all, what y'all do is a big reason that Rankin County grows like it grows when people feel safe here. And that's, that's one of the biggest things, is to commend y'all for what y'all do.
I think right now, he looks.
Thank y'all for being here. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all.
Sheriff.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Appreciate you. Appreciate you.
Thank y'all. See you. All right, I guess we'll move forward. Any more public comments? Where's Janice? Is nobody out there? Nothing out there, no more? Nobody signed in?
The ones that we have signed in were for our recognition or for a zoning matter.
All right, let's move forward. All right. All right, well, let's, let's move on to, I need a motion on old business.
Can we move?
Any discussion? All approved? All right, send it, Janet.
Motion approved.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, what, I've noticed where a domain or additional support for another fire department? I thought we already did that.
Which fire department?
Down the pocket.
This is additional for the fire station of the building.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they just, yeah, bills are coming in, like sheet rock finishing and all that.
And it was still under budget.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
They just, about once a month, they'll send in.
Right.
You're not allowed to pay them directly, to pay the contractor directly, you're not approved for the contractor. So, you have to abide by those four.
One of the very few things around the budget.
That's right. Mr. Sullivan.
Did y'all vote on consent?
Did Blue vote?
Yes.
Not yet. Y'all good with consent agenda?
Yes.
I made a motion.
Yeah.
Steve second.
Good.
All in favor? Mr. Sullivan.
I made petition, change the assessment on two thousand twenty-one real property and the nineteen twenty and twenty-one personal property assessment.
Motion. Second.
Our motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Jay. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. All opposed, like so?
Item B, petition to adjust the two thousand twenty-one home state exemption supplement.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I think, gentlemen, if you want to, you can take C through G all together.
That's, that's fine, if y'all'd like to do that.
I would.
As item read.
I make, I make a motion to approve, uh, C and D.
And E, F, and G?
Yeah.
Yeah.
C through G.
Yeah, C through G.
All right, second.
All right. All in favor?
Thank y'all.
All right, appreciate it, gentlemen. Ms. Bridget.
Morning.
How are y'all?
Just fine.
My first item this morning, I'm requesting approval of a copy or contract with Southern duplicating for the tax assessor's office.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All right. Number B.
The next item is authority to advertise for written proposals for the collection of household hazardous waste for Rankin County. I think that's gonna be on June fourth.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed, like so?
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Harrison.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, request approval for AT&amp;T Utility Permit along District Two. This will be in Azalea Courts in Azalea Trail.
I'm making motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Parker.
Morning.
Good morning.
We have one item today. It's on the Andrew Chapel Road Reconstruction Project. We're recommending approval of payout number six through February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. We've reviewed and recommend payment to Site Masters, Inc., in the amount of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and five dollars and sixty-seven cents, and authority to issue that check.
I make motion to approve. Second. I do have a question.
All right, we got a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Jay. All in favor? Aye. Any discussion?
Yes. I know y'all are meeting pretty much weekly. I mean, you got a guy on the job every day. Are you comfortable with where we're at?
Define comfortable. We're, we're hearing good things from the contractor. We met, we are, we are, we do have somebody out there daily, and Mike is visiting the site quite often, and, and we're staying in contact. And we're meeting with the owner of the company once a month, and we met with him last week, and, and he's, he's saying he's committed to it. He's talking about potentially bringing a second crew on at a point when he can, he's close to putting some pavement down, and, and he, he doesn't want to bring the second crew in until he can break open some more, and, and we're not really wanting him to break open some more until he closes some up, so, uh, but he, he is, he is, in my opinion, what he's telling us is, is he's going to do that. I, I don't know that I'm comfortable that he's gonna finish on time, but I do know that he's putting forth, they're working seven days a week out there, and, and they're working seven days a week. So, that they're putting forth some effort, and, and we're, like, like we've talked about before, our time and our pay is about, we're about, you know, fifty percent behind, but the asphalt will make up some of that to close that gap, but I do think it's gonna be a struggle to, it just kind of depends on the weather, and unfortunately, we're in the season where we're getting rains like today, and we don't have a lot of warmth to, to, to dry it out, so it'll take a little time, but we, we had some issues out there with some instability in some of the road, and there, we've talked to the geotech and getting that worked out, so it's moving forward. It's not, obviously not as fast as anybody would like for it to, even the contractor especially, but, but, but we're pushing it down the road.
Well, I think as long as we monitor it and stay in touch with him and the crews, the time is an issue, but I'd rather have a good road than run through it too quick.
Right now, I'll say we're all on the same page. Now, we may find out we're in different books, but right now, we're all on the same page, so. Thank you.
Further discussion? All right, Mr. Schley. I think you can take, all of these gonna be set on March the thirty-first, so I'll make a motion, let's see it, A through I.
Yes, sir.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any discussion?
Yeah, I like our, our format's good. We vote on it, then we discuss it. I like that. All right, item J, gentlemen, is a public hearing for the Hindu Temple. This is a conditional use permit request Vernon Jones Avenue. This is District Five property. We'll open that public hearing. I will instruct anyone who intends to speak for the board to be prepared to come forward. The Hindu Temple is seeking a conditional use permit for a multi-phase expansion of their existing campus on Vernon Jones Avenue. The temple owns a five-acre parcel that lies across the street from the existing temple facility. The property is Zone C two. Phase one will include clearing, grading, a gravel parking lot, drainage infrastructure, and detention ponds. Future phases will include asphalt paving, construction of three fifteen-hundred square foot priest quarters, and a fifty-four-hundred square foot community center. The church, churches are allowed in any zoning district in Rankin County subject to a conditional use permit. The hearing notice was published and the property was posted. We have received no calls concerning this matter. So, at this time, that public hearing is open, and I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the conditional use permit request made by the Hindu Temple. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? As Vice President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. Unless the board has questions of the applicant, we'll close that public hearing. Okay?
All right.
At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I'll drive a motion.
Well, I'm, uh, where, where are we at, Tim, with as far as the engineering goes? Have we heard Wagner, they give us what we need?
I have not, I do not know if Wagner has given anything, turned anything over on that one. I know that these folks engineer and benchmark have been in communications. I've been in a lot of meetings, James. But I have not heard anything.
So, Craig, how do we do this? I'm in favor of moving forward, but we need to make sure we get the detention ponds correct, so just to approve contingent on all the engineers to get worked out.
So, what my suggestion would be, Jay, is that we approve the conditional use application, and one of the conditions would be that there be no construction with respect to detention ponds until such time as the Wagner Benchmark and the engineer for the temple have gotten on the same page about the size and placement of the actual retention area.
So, we'll hold up construct, we'll move forward, put the parking lot in, but nothing other than that.
Yeah, so what they, my, my point, I guess, would be this, the, the, the property owner needs to understand that the original placement and shape of the detention facility could potentially change if it's determined later that the activity associated with our project related to Vernon Jones calls for the detention facility on the temple's property to be changed in order for it to meet those requirements. So, they would be taking their own course to move forward. I would think the clearing and grubbing should go forward. That won't be impacted significantly. Craig, I don't mean to interrupt, but also, after these conditional use, they still submit a site plan. I don't think they've gone to the extent to finalize their site plan waiting on the conditional use, so there, there'll still be a site plan review which will bring in the detention and all that, so.
So, we don't have to worry about any contingencies?
I mean, it, it can be made as a conditional use. It needs to be a condition. Yes, sir.
All right.
So, it's clear to everybody, on the front end, there, there is an interplay, the, the property owner, the engineers for the county that are working on our ARPA projects, the engineer on the Vernon Jones project itself, the construction engineer on that project, all of that needs to be coordinated, and everybody understands that on the front end. I think we're in good shape. I will say, because I just happen to know that, that recently Benchmark provided survey data on the Vernon Jones project to Wagner, which was what Wagner has been waiting to get. So, that happened last week, I think. I, I don't, I think that's when that happened. And so, Wagner is, from what I understand, they are moving forward now on the Vernon Jones project now that they have the data that they needed.
All right. All right. I'll make a motion to approve the, the, as far as we move forward, the use of the, the temple conditions with, you know, getting our engineering done appropriately, but they can go ahead and clear grub and put the park of the, the gravel in for the parking lot.
Okay. All right, second.
Motion, my Jay, second by myself.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
The next item, Mr. Vice President, is item K, which is a public hearing on BG Capital LLC. This is a conditional use permit request. We'll open that public hearing. They are seeking, BG Capital LLC is seeking a conditional use permit to operate a laundromat in Suite B of the Exxon Convenience Store at eleven-twenty-three Old Can, Old Phantom Road. I said point nine-six acre parcel, property is Zone C two. There will be no exterior modifications to the building other than signage. The proposed hours of operation, six AM to eleven PM daily. Hearing notice was published. The property has been posted, and we have received no calls concerning this matter. That hearing is open. I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition of the BG Capital LLC conditional use permit request. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? As Vice President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter unless the board has questions for the applicant, we will close that public hearing. Okay? At this time, it'll be appropriate to take action on item K.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I hadn't discussed this with Daniel, have y'all?
I don't know anything.
I mean.
Do y'all know anything about it today?
You haven't had any conversation with Daniel on this?
I just sent a table to.
Let's table it. Let's table it.
Okay.
I mean, I, I know we done made a motion and a second, but.
Well, I, I rescind.
Okay.
Let's sum it up. All right, we'll just table.
If Jared's willing to alter his motion to be wanted to table, then we can move forward on the motion and second that we have.
I think actually Brad approved it. I second it.
Yeah.
All right, okay, yeah. Brad, are you good?
Yeah, I'm.
Do you have a motion to table? Let, let Daniel be here for this. All right, we will reset, and, and because we're gonna take the action to table, Brad, I would ask that the motion also include a notice in your motion to reset consideration for our next available hearing date.
Will that be the thirty-first?
Would be, I think that's gonna end up being on the thirty-first. Yes, ma'am. Okay? So, so that if anyone is here in, in, in a representative capacity of the applicant, we are providing notice right now to them and all the world that we will reconsider this request, conditional use request, on March the thirty-first at nine o'clock in this room.
All right. That good?
All right.
So, we, I mean, we need to make a motion.
Yes, sir. Your motion now.
I'll make a motion to table to the thirty-first.
That works. We're good.
All in favor? All opposed?
All right. As President, item L is a public hearing on the Mark Vincent rezoning request. This is a White Road property. It's District One property. We will open that public hearing. Mr. Vincent is seeking to rezone twenty-two acres. This is on White Road. The current zoning is RE one A. The request is to rezone to RE one. Mr. Vincent is proposing a subdivision development with five lots that range in size from two acres up to six and a half acres. RE one A allows for minor subdivision development, but the maximum number of lots is four, and so this being a five-lot development, he is required to rezone the property. All five lots are to have frontage on White Road. The, the minimum, this is, this is a staff recommendation for minimum heated and cooled square footage, given the size of homes in the vicinity. The staff is recommending that the board place a twenty-five-hundred-foot heated and cooled square foot minimum on all of the properties, on all of the houses that are dwellings that are placed there. The hearing notice has been published, and the property has been posted. We received one call, and the caller was in opposition for the request and indicated that he likes the appearance of the property as is. and indicated that he likes the appearance of the property as is, the countryside, and doesn't want an increase in the traffic. That was the one call that we received. We have a public hearing open on that now. I ask if there is anyone here in person that wishes to speak in opposition to the Mark Vincent rezoning request? Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? All right. You'll need to give your name and address for the record, please.
Roger Grantham, one oh seven Grantham Farm Road.
Okay.
I'm not sure. I've tried to call Mark about this land. It's front, from my house, frontage to the road. It's a. It's just a little section right there. It's been maintained. There's an old fence. It's there. But I know it's been there since sixty-four.
That parcel I laid in, is that the one that we're discussing there?
Right.
Okay. Where is your house?
Right here.
Right there? Okay.
So it's about. I'm guessing fifteen yards.
Yeah, it's right in the back door. I always thought, I always thought that was y'all's property, just all growing up. Growing up, I always thought that was part of y'all's property.
Yeah.
I mean, because you keep, the grass has been cut there and all.
Right.
And I just thought that was y'all's. I didn't, I, the fact, I thought you went all the way down to the ditch all those years.
Yeah.
And then the ditch kind of separated the two pieces of property. So.
That's a, yeah, that, before we've been cutting the grass.
Right.
That's that little section.
See, that, I'll show you, Brad. Yeah. Yeah. This is, this is White Road. This is where his house is. They, this is part of that, what I always thought was theirs. And Creek goes, which one's Creek? Right, right here. Here's the Creek.
Yeah.
Right here. And I always thought it went all the way down through there. But as it turned out, part of the property's up here. So it's what, about four acres? I think, I think in the flat that I saw, he showed, he showed it four and then the smallest lot was down here at the bottom by the ditch. And the rest of them got larger. I'm just letting you know what I saw. And, uh. So, um, okay, well, what? Okay. But right now, he's planning on putting a, a lot right here, somewhere in here. Right, right here, I guess. Yeah, right beside, yeah.
Yeah.
Because your house faces your road. Yeah. But I mean, as far as the, being able to rezone it, that is not going to have anything to do with that.
If I could, if, just, just kind of refocus us here, the purpose, Mr. Grantham, if you'll come here so I can address for. The, the purpose of what we're doing here is a rezoning. This is a land use regulation, doesn't have anything to do with property rights or ownership rights or access rights. What the board is doing here today would have no impact on a private property owner's ability to address issues of access rights or property rights. You're simply, the request before you is to rezone so that, assuming all other issues are addressed at some point, the development can proceed in a five lot capacity with individual lots, all having frontage on White Road and at the appropriate square foot minimum that has been provided by the staff.
Mr. Graham, could you, go ahead and tell us what it is that you would like out of this?
No, just.
Could you tell us what it is that you want to see done?
What do you want, Mr. Graham?
Oh, well, first of all, I want it be able to put house right there. Be able to sign my house.
Well, that, that's not, and I think that's what he's saying, Roger, at this time, at this time, that, that's not covering that.
Okay.
But that's something that can be addressed, which when you, the landowners, and consideration of something there and express that. But at this time, it's just the rezoning of it, which ain't going to really, I mean, that's not going to factor into you at all. So, right, I think you need to, I agree with what you're saying. But for right now, all we're doing is rezoning it.
That's right.
For the, and, and really, the way it's being rezoned is to the better in that it's going to require, you won't have a bunch of little small houses, you'll have large homes there, larger acreage. So, I mean, it's the lesser of two evils, I guess, if you're looking at it. Either, you know, you could have.
Jared, is it all wooded or pasture?
Wooded. All wooded.
I'm sure we could work out a deal with just a little buffer.
We used to farm that. It's all grown up. I know it by the back of my hand.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'd say all those years, we farmed out of the ditch. I thought that was, you all's property down to the ditch.
I think I have a solution. That lot, he said the smallest one would be two and a half acres. Just buy that two and a half acres.
Two and a half, no, it's going to be, the two and a half's on the other side of the ditch. This is going to be a four acre.
Well, then four acre.
Yeah.
Buy that four acres and do your.
A door didn't return my call.
He wants to return it.
I'll, I'll, I'll bring it up.
I mean, today, we just going.
He'll be talking.
Work on the zoning and then.
We're going to work on zoning and then you can work on that part.
Okay.
All right, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Roger.
Appreciate that.
Do we want to, do I have a motion to take action on rezoning this place for?
Motion.
I, I second it. I'm going to tell you, you know, whoever called and liked the landscape change, I, I agree with them. But hey, growth is growth. And if it's going to change, I'd rather see a change like, like we got it right here.
Yes.
These will be homes, the people will be there and willing to stay there. They're not going to be moving on. They're going to have an investment there that'll keep them there. And to unknowing to their knowledge, just fixing to change a whole lot further down the road.
I'm sure that they could probably work a deal out to.
Well, he's not talking, he wasn't the changing. This is somebody else, I feel sure. They don't like to see it changed, they like to drive by and see the wooded area.
Yeah.
But no, I think they probably can. I hope so. I'm going to try to help that. So anyway, I'd make a motion to, I'll second it.
You made a motion, Steve seconded it.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
The next item, Mr. Vice President, the next item is Item L. This is a hearing on the David Vincent conditional use permit at Gablewood Trail. It's a District Two property. Let me ask, well, I guess we'll just take it, even though Daniel's not here. Do y'all, you want to move forward on this or you want to table this to the thirty-first?
Yes, we'll table it. I'll make a motion to table this item to the thirty-first.
Second.
Any discussion? No more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. Gentlemen, the next item is kind of, it's a good news item. As you guys may recall, that we had a situation several months ago, if not over a year ago now, where we had some activity in the tax collector's office that needed law enforcement attention. That matter has now been resolved and I'm pleased to report that we have received a recovery of all solid waste funds that had been embezzled. And that has been returned to the citizens of Rankin County along with all of the costs associated with that activity. And the individual has been dealt with by law enforcement. The recovery includes principal and interest. I need you to acknowledge on our minutes that we have made a full and complete recovery of all matters associated with that issue. I just need a motion to acknowledge.
Make a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to thank all of our staff for doing a great job and discovering what was going on.
This was definitely a team effort and I do want to give credit where credit is due. Sheriff acted immediately, the tax collector immediately acted. And because of that immediate action, there was a preservation of all of the important information that was necessary for the law enforcement side. The state auditor's office was heavily involved in this and worked very closely with both the tax collector and the sheriff's office to achieve the result that we have. I do have to applaud how the matter was handled and that it was handled appropriately and in the best interest of our citizens. And we were well-served by our law enforcement, tax collector, and state auditor community.
We got a motion to second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, Mr. Hicks.
Good morning, gentlemen. Item A on the agenda under my section is the authority to pay the county's portion of PERS for our chancery clerk, the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars in authority to issue that check.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Like so.
All right. Item B is approval to pay the application number five to Mayrant and Associates for one hundred thirty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-eight cents in authority to issue check. And this is for our community services building. We have received our required document from the city to move into that structure. There's a couple of things we're waiting on as far as exit signs that were on order and a fire extinguisher, I think. And then we're waiting on the furniture. It has been ordered and as soon as it gets here, we'll make the transition.
Are we going to need to hire a moving company?
No, sir. We're going to handle all that internally.
Motion.
All right, got a motion by Steve second. By Jared. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
All right.
Item C is the approval to set the Rankin County Spring Cleanup Week from May second through May the seventh. And we're going to publish that twice in the Rankin County News.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by itself.
Steve.
Any more discussion?
We're going to have nine locations throughout the county with multiple dumpsters at each location, same as it's been in the past.
All in favor?
Are we using the same provider?
Based on quotes we obtained, yes.
Is it too late to get some others or?
Well, we have obtained some quotes.
Okay.
So, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Additional business?
You had something?
I do.
I do.
I do.
I think we all do.
Yeah. I want to, I want to discuss our seniors' garbage rate. And I got a couple of thoughts. One, a couple of questions have come up and I wanted to get the answers to them. But one thing I want to say is the, you know, we went up, I think it was sixty dollars total between the two. And the seniors took the biggest hit in that they were getting a discount. I understand it takes the same amount of time to stop, to pick their garbage up as it does everybody else. But most times, they don't have a one bag of garbage. And a lot of times, they don't even stop because the garbage's not out there. So in some cases, they don't stop. So, you know, I, I'd like to see, I'm for having some type of adjustment.
Well, I mean, the thing is, is, I mean, we can adjust it, but I mean, that's what waste management's charging us.
No, I think it needs to be adjusted and I'm, I'm going to let him say that we, that aren't seniors, that aren't the seniors, will pick up more of the slack. And, because we do have more, if you look at tonnage, and I know the others, most of us are probably producing more tonnage than the seniors anyway. So I think it does look a little wopsided when, from their eyes and the, the conversations I've had, you know, they went up over a hundred percent, oh, way over a hundred percent. And, and they just, this really upsets them as far as their, some of them are, some of them can afford it maybe, but some of them are on a very tight budget. And I sympathize with that. And, you know, if they had their choice, they'd do away with the garbage pickup and go back to putting a wire cage in the backyard and burning it on garbage like they grew up doing. And so I'd like to see us change it somewhat, that the rate change to, to help them out more, which I don't think we really gave it the consideration we should have had. I brought it up last meeting. Last meeting about that, some way we could have offset that. Other question came, so that's one question. The other question came up and I, I didn't want to share. Are commercial rates, did they change?
We, we don't have a commercial rate.
We don't?
This is all residential.
Okay.
So it has to do with commercial property.
Okay.
They're on their own, they have to make their own agreement. They can use any provider they wish.
That, that was the answer I wanted to be able to give. I didn't think we did, but I didn't want to step out and say that. Okay, you answered my question. But, but I'm for doing something to, to let it look like we helped the seniors more because it really looks like we're playing catch-up and let them play part of the hard catch-up. And that's just, that's my opinion, what I've gotten from the majority of everyone that talked to me. And I'm going to tell you, I've had more phone calls on this than I have had in the years that I've been elected, fourteen, fifteen years on this one matter. Emails, text messages, messenger messages, phone calls, phone calls from a group, church, church representatives speaking for the senior group, I mean.
So what are you suggesting? Do you have any suggestions?
Well, they're, they're, you know, I feel like, I just look at the numbers, okay? We went up sixty on them. I mean, went up to sixty dollars on them.
The only thing you could do is if you just double there from twenty-five to fifty.
Well, I'm looking at, I was thinking about taking twenty off of theirs. Is what I was doing. That, that's kind of the way I looked at it.
Well, whatever we take off, we need to add on to the rest.
And that's unfortunate.
Yeah.
But I've not had one phone call, and I don't know if y'all can speak up, one from any of the rest, as you want to put it. I've not had any of their phone calls. I've had only the messages from the seniors. And, and I see their point. If you look at it, it looks like it went up, they went up over a hundred percent.
They, and they do not have as much garbage. And what part of the pay that we have to give to waste management deals with tonnage. And they don't produce the garbage that a family that's less than senior citizen.
And like I said, a lot of times, they don't even stop there because they don't have anything out there.
Right.
Oh.
I don't know how we balance it. I'm like Jay, where do you get it from or take it from? Because it's not a money-making thing. We're not taking this money and doing stuff.
Just trying to break even.
We're just, and we're still probably, we're not, we're not breaking.
And people are not paying their bills either. And the only way we can collect on it is add a tag at the end of the year or when the tag runs out.
Renee, that folder I just gave you, I was told he boasts about he does not pay even a garbage fee. Just going to put that in note. I was told that yesterday from that. That's a whole nother deal. But I'm just showing you, some of them, from what others say, do slip through the cracks. And he's been boasting that he had never paid a garbage fee.
And I think the county and the EOC has been doing a house count. I don't know where we at on that house count because that's what waste management charges us per house.
You know, the email, one of the emails we all got, I think it came from Daniel's district, was about how the growth is. But they, I didn't respond to it because I think it was his district. But my thing was, they don't understand the growth is more.
Makes it worse.
Makes it worse.
Correct.
So he didn't understand that from that aspect. He's thinking we're making money off of this.
And a lot of seniors didn't know the county gave discounts. And I mean, they calling now won't know how they can get the discount.
Yeah, and if I could step in here for just a minute, I was going to address the, the phone calls. Of course, our phone calls over the, yesterday were quadrupled what we normally get.
Right.
A majority, and I'm talking about a high majority of those calls were, well, I didn't even know there was a reduced rate. How do I sign up for it? Well, whatever decision you make today on that senior rate is going to be affected on what we initially calculated our revenues to be because there's going to be a whole lot more people signed up. I would say at least, based on yesterday's phone calls, about three to four hundred more people signing up for a discount. So that's less revenue to the county. If you lower it to fifty dollars on the senior rate, you're going to move the cost of all disposal. That fifty dollars won't even call, cover the cost of the garbage truck going and picking up at each house. Okay? So you're going to move that cost of all, disposing of all the garbage over to the regular rate individuals. You're going to move all of the recycling cost to the people paying the higher rate and all the overhead costs associated with the county running the waste management to the people. people paying the higher rate. And if that's what you wanna do, that's fine.
Are you talking about only because of five dollars?
If you lower it from sixty to fifty dollars.
Sixty is the break-even point.
Yeah.
Tell me.
It costs, on a quarterly basis, it costs fifty dollars and seventy cents per housetop for the county to pay, that's what, we pay Waste Management to go pick up garbage at your house.
That's not the disposal.
That's not even the disposal.
That's at the current rate, and we're going to incur a four percent CPI increase on your contract.
In October.
October 1. Why? Because that's the maximum CPI increase that Waste Management is entitled to, and it's dependent upon the actual CPI being at least that number. The max they can go is four. If it's above four, the CPI is above four, they can't get more than that, they're capped at four. If it's less than four, it's whatever the CPI is. We will definitely be paying a four percent CPI increase October 1.
What would that be?
It's four percent on top of what we got, so you do sixteen ninety times four percent.
Our annual cost will be, our annual cost.
Seventeen fifty-ish.
Yeah.
Be what?
Per household collection.
Seventeen, it'll go up from sixteen ninety to seventeen fifty-eight.
At least sixty cents and possibly, it's like, I don't know.
Well, it is less than a dollar.
I think, I mean, we should have been raising the rates over the last five, ten years, instead of waiting all at one time.
We should have, but where we are now.
Keith.
Yes, sir.
Just for everybody to understand, the rate for people who are not senior citizens is how much?
Seventy-five dollars per quarter.
Per quarter?
Yes, sir. Twenty-five dollars per month.
All right, and theirs went from like fifty.
Fifty dollars?
Fifty.
Per quarter?
To seventy-five.
Correct.
The seniors went from forty.
No, twenty-five.
Oh, twenty-five.
To sixty.
To sixty. That's what I'm saying.
So, you're still, the regular rate is seventy-five dollars per quarter, and you're still offering a discount. It's just not as much of a discount as it has been in the past. They're still getting a discount. They're not paying the full rate.
But they went up, they went up a hundred percent.
They went up ten dollars more than the regular rate.
No, but I'm, no, I'm making it up from twenty-five to sixty. That's what they're looking at. They're not looking at ten-dollar regular rate. They're looking at, we were paying twenty-five, now we're paying sixty.
They're still paying less than everyone else.
What does it cost to pick up? Well, it's hard to say, because you got the tonnage on the other end.
Right.
The average cost this year, right now, for, um, per housetop to the county, is sixty dollars and around twenty-four cents.
So, why would we charge seventy-five?
Because, unless, because you don't wanna raise rates every year. We have to have a surplus this year and next year to offset deficits in years four and five of the contract.
Steve, if I can, the board's instructions, originally, when we were looking at our Waste Management contract, and everybody understood that we were about to pay a lot more.
Yeah.
For collection and disposal. We got one response to our RFP that provided both collection and disposal. We got one response to our RFP that provided twice-a-week collection, right? And the board said, we are dead-set, we're gonna have twice-a-week collection. Our residents are used to that, they're entitled to that service, and if we're gonna provide that level of service, it's gonna have to be costly, it's going to be costly for us to be able to do that. And I think everybody knew at that point, we were looking at a fee increase. There was no way to avoid it.
I know.
We were already going in the hole at the old rates under our collection scheme, and now we are paying at least fifty percent more per housetop to our vendor.
Right.
Right now, and we have been since October. So, we are going in the hole over two hundred thousand dollars per month. We're going in the hole, and we're having to make up that deficit.
On the seventy-five.
I understand. Our people, I mean, the people in the county, I don't think they understand about garbage. If you watch TV, you know, you can see Jackson's having big problems, and other, I mean, Hines County, and whenever we solicited, we had one person to bid on it. I mean, so we either say yes or no.
Yeah, and we kinda stuck, because we don't have a landfill in Rankin County. We don't have a transfer station in Rankin County.
And I have to say, ever since Brad's been on this board, every day, he has worked on getting something to help with garbage collection. But garbage collection is not as easy as just saying we're gonna do it.
That's right.
Because you got EPA, you got everybody in the world that don't want, and nobody wants a dang garbage pit beside their house.
And if it's so easy, you'd have more people doing it.
Yeah. I mean, and nobody, when you go to church, there's nobody in your Sunday School class that says, oh, I had a wonderful week picking up garbage. You know, you can't get people to come to work and do the job.
Yes, sir.
It's just, this is a big, big problem.
It is. Y'all's instructions was to look at setting your fee schedule so that we didn't have to keep coming back and talking about this, and the way we do that, Steve, in a situation where you have a contract with Waste Management that provides for annual increases, and they're pretty good about knowing what they are entitled to under the contract, they're really good at that.
Yep.
They've got smart people that know exactly how to bill and what they're entitled to bill under the agreements. So, we can see now that our cost to provide that service over the next six years, which is the term of our contract, that cost is going to go up. So, we have to set our fee. If we don't wanna have to keep revisiting the fee.
Yes, sir.
We have to set the fee at a point where we cover that arc of increased costs.
I understand.
So, the fees, as proposed, the seventy-five dollars per quarter for regular rate folks, and our sixty dollars per quarter for sixty-five and older and disabled, those two combined provide for a revenue stream for our solid waste collection fund that we anticipate, because it's a best guess, we anticipate that that fee schedule will cover us for close to the entire six-year period. We won't have to come back and do another fee increase if we can manage to keep it.
I think we're talking about doing that. I think we recognize that. All we're talking about is adjusting what the seniors have to pay. We still put the money.
You want us to pay ninety dollars.
I don't mean it ugly at all. I mean, I'm working, and those that are working can afford it better than those that are not working.
But that's.
And there's some that are retired, and they may very likely have a great retirement, it's not affecting them at all. But the majority of these, it's affecting.
My hope was, in walking.
And you got, you got gas, you got everything else, and that's another thing, it came at a worst time.
A gallon of milk.
That's what they're saying, you know, groceries.
That's right.
So, I mean, it's at the worst time. I mean, I'm for doing something.
Yeah.
And split it down the middle, wouldn't do anything but save them five bucks.
So, I went through all that so that you guys understood. How did, how did we get the rate set there? We were doing what we could to honor the board's request.
I understand.
Which was to figure out how to get us that entire six-year period, figure out how to do that as best you can.
Yeah.
So, that's the rate structure that came up. If y'all wanna revisit the rate structure, there's a couple of things you need to, you need to understand, and I will make sure that.
Well, I think that if everybody understood that the seniors did go up, but there's still a pretty good discount.
Right.
They, I don't think that most of them understand that they're paying sixty and others are paying seventy-five or whatever. That, uh, I mean, and the hard truth about it is, we're handcuffed.
Yeah. Keith, do we know, are there any other?
I got one other thought.
How much did we lose last year? Do you have that?
Yeah.
City of Pearl.
Hey, Craig, can you give us a total on what the county went in the hole in last year?
It was in Rankin County.
Keith would have to help you with that.
I can tell you, so far this year, we've transferred eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to solid waste from General County.
Now, that's from October to today.
Yes.
Eight hundred and fifty grand.
To cover the loss.
And let me help you guys understand what that means. What that means is, it came out of General County. It means everybody in the county is paying for unincorporated county garbage collection.
Yep. The seniors and everybody.
That's what that means, yes. Everybody is paying for that, because that's coming out of General. That millage is assigned to everybody. City of Brandon, City of Pearl, City of Flowood, City of Florence, City of Richland.
You should lay the key word, millage. What would it take, what millage would it take to garbage pick up?
We have that number, but let me give you some background on that first, so that you understand what the dynamics are there. Number one, the millage, the millage assessment, Jared, the first opportunity that you would have would be when you set your budget in September. You have to give the appropriate notices.
Right.
That millage is assigned, it would go into effect January 1, for purposes, it goes into effect October 1, but for purposes of collection, you would see those dollars for the first time about eighteen to nineteen months from today.
I can tell you, if you were to do that, though, you're gonna get all kind of.
I'm just asking.
Well, the county used to do that, and there was, you know, when we do that, everyone pays.
That's correct.
I know exactly.
Businesses, large farmers.
Yes.
It's gonna up that. I'm just asking, because if that question comes up, and I feel like it will, I will be able to answer, because it affects my family as much as any of us. We got a thousand acres of land, and we got two, just these houses right here.
Y'all can do the math in your heads, y'all are smart. You've got, you've got to generate in the neighborhood of eight million dollars in millage revenue off of that assessment. You gotta generate about eight million dollars. That's to cover where you are now, and you would be reassessing, adding millage as your costs increase over the life of your contract, okay? So, I think the timing, Jared, makes that really difficult. You're gonna end up having to cover the interim.
I guess.
Right? Before you actually get to a millage impact.
Nearly two years.
You've gotta cover eighteen to nineteen months.
Roughly what, five? Five and a half mils.
Yes, sir. In that range, Jared, is what you're looking at, and in order to cover your costs of running the program. The board, long ago, decided that charging every property owner was not the way that we wanted to do solid waste collection. We preferred the second option, which is to charge a fee for service.
Want to be able to answer that.
Right. And so, back to my, back to my earlier discussion, we've run some calculations that would, and by the way, I have, I struggle talking about the costs in terms of quarters, right? I'm more apt to be able to focus in on what, what does that mean per month?
Yeah.
And so, the numbers are easier for me. If you'll allow me, I wanna talk about the numbers per month. Please. Because that seems to be easier for me to grasp, and I can see it more clearly. Currently, regular rate payers in Rankin County currently are paying sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents a month for a solid waste collection.
That's two times a week.
Yes, two times a week. Roughly, roughly eight times a month, roughly.
Yeah.
It varies, but that's, for that service, everybody currently, that's a regular rate payer, everybody is currently paying in the neighborhood of two dollars and ninety-five cents per pickup for garbage collection. So, that helps me to really drill down. So, for less than three dollars, I put all of my garbage out at the curb, if I'm in unincorporated Rankin County, put all my garbage out at the curb, and it disappears, and I don't have to touch it again, and it's just gone, less than three dollars a time. So, that's a, that's a good service, that's an affordable service that's provided by the county at a good fee, at a, at a good cost, very affordable, all right? And that does not, by the way, that less than three dollars, that is the same with the rate increase. I think I'm actually giving you the rate increase number when I tell you it's still less than three dollars, okay? That's with the rate increase.
It was two dollars.
That's at, that's at the current rate for regular folks, which is, if you allow this to stay in place as advertised, they will be paying twenty-five dollars per month instead of sixteen sixty-seven per month, they'll pay twenty-five per month, and that's three dollars per pickup, okay? The seniors will be, will go from paying eight dollars and thirty-three cents per month, which is the current rate, to twenty dollars per month. It's eleven dollars and sixty-seven cents per month more for seniors and disabled. That's your current proposal. Am I clear with that? So, the increase for the regular rate payers is eight dollars and thirty-three cents a month. The increase for the seniors is eleven sixty-seven a month. But the seniors are still paying five dollars per month less than everyone else.
Now, and, but the municipalities, they don't get the discount.
That's a different deal. That's a different deal.
Well, it depends on what city you are. They do their own, each city has their own garbage rate.
Each city has their own garbage rate. Our understanding is that the City of Pearl is the only other political subdivision in Rankin County that offers a senior discount. Nobody else does.
Okay.
Flowood, if you're sixty-five.
Brandon.
You pay the same, which happens to be zero. If you, if you live in Brandon, you, we pay nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents a month for garbage pickup, whether I'm sixty-five or a hundred and five, it's the same amount. So, so, offering a discount to seniors and disabled is not required. You're not required to offer that discount. You do it as an accommodation. And so, the issue now is, the blowback is, why are we, sixty-five and older and disabled, why are we being called upon to shoulder more of the burden of a rate increase than others? Okay?
Right.
We can, we can talk about that, and we've given you the reality. The reality is this, if we reduce the senior and disabled rate, if we reduce that, we will do one of two things. We'll either have to increase the rate on the regulars to be able to cover our six-year contract period with costs, or we won't cover our six-year period with costs.
They say that you're gonna double.
We're gonna like to raise the regular from seventy-five to probably ninety.
I know. You're gonna have to raise it to offset it. That's right.
That's, the point is, well, you don't have to, Jared. You could leave the regular rate right where it is, but you would need to understand that you're probably not gonna get all the way through your six-year contract with your cost coverage.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could leave it where it is, all right? So, what does that look like? Let's say, for instance, that you decided, look, we want, we just want everybody in the county to pay more at the exact same amount. We want everybody that's paying for garbage to pay eight dollars and thirty-three cents per month more, everybody. That way, we're not singling anybody out. Everybody's paying the exact same amount of extra per month, eight dollars and thirty-three cents. That means that your regular rate people are gonna pay seventy-five dollars a quarter, twenty-five dollars a month. And your seniors, instead of paying sixty a quarter, twenty a month, they're gonna pay fifty a quarter, sixteen dollars and sixty-seven a month. Everybody's paying eight dollars and thirty-three cents per month more than they have been. That's equal. That's fair across the board. What does that, what does that number generate for us? That gets us a cost recovery, that gets us in a position to cover our Waste Management contract through roughly the first part of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, maybe, unless we move the money that we borrowed back.
But that's not good government. I mean, we're planning to be in the hole.
Yeah, so, we will always, that will always be the plan, Steve, because we can only go so far. State law will not allow us to go into a longer-term contract than a six-year contract with renewal options. So, we're gonna always be basically trying to guess and telegraph, how far can we go, knowing that the max we could go is basically six years. So, that's our window, and y'all's instructions to us was, try to get us a rate.
Right.
Structure that lets us get all the way through that six years, so we don't have to come back and look at this anymore.
Yep.
But, but the last meeting, when I saw it was going to sixty for them, I said, couldn't we do something to roll more but on to the regular and take some load off the sixty, off the seniors? And then, now we've gotten the flashback. So if we went, if we moved them to forty-five and then roll that, that difference over to the other.
Okay.
What's the difference? What, what's the difference? You say money.
It's actually not, because I think there's more regular rate payers, Jared. There's, there is some differential in there as far as how that affects your costs. Uh, but what it's gonna impact is how far can we get on this cost coverage?
We got some people out there. We got people out there, eighty-five to, to ninety-five. I went to a hundred-year-old birthday party for some lady. She's still paying garbage fee. Her, her children said, hey, I'll pay the difference. You know, Billy, put it on me, you know? Same way with me. And I got a ninety-two-year-old mom, same way with me. I'll pay it, you know? So, I mean, uh, when they got that set little check comes in.
I guess what we need to know, what would be helpful to know now would be, is there an intention? Because we really have time pressure now that's on us. You know, we, we bill quarterly. And we've got bills that are going out April one. And so we've, we've put our notifications out in accordance with the statute. If, if there are going to be adjustments to the rate structure as already approved and noticed in the paper. If, if that's gonna happen, we gotta know something right now.
I don't think we can do it. I think we've, we've said it. It is what it is. And I understand the senior citizens. I mean, I don't think they understood, at least the ones I talked to from reading the paper, that they were still not being charged the full amount.
Yeah, they do. Well, the ones I talked to, they understand.
Talked to felt like that they were being ripped off. Uh, they didn't understand that they were not paying really the amount that it cost the government to take care of their garbage.
Yes.
And when you explain down to three dollars a pickup, you know?
Two feet.
Yeah, yeah, two, well, for them, two feet.
That's right. That's right.
It's, and then when you look at the global from two years ago, we've got a different government. Our inflation is running through the roof.
Yes, sir.
We can't get people to come to work and ride on a garbage truck.
Garage truck.
And I mean, they're paying fifteen dollars, eighteen dollars.
Eighteen.
Now, you know, it.
You got one guy.
Uh, and we don't have a machine that we can make money up here and pay. All we do is take money here and pay bills over here.
That's right.
And when there's not enough here to go over there, we can get in trouble like our sister across the river.
Yes, sir.
And I don't want to get there. I don't want a plan to be in a deficit, like in year four or five, like you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
I don't either, but you look at this, you look at even that on the seniors.
I know. It's hard.
I'm going on up on the seniors. I mean, I don't hear them complain about their taxes going up. I never hear them complain. I don't think I ever get a phone call. Now, John, you may get a lot of them. We get some. But I mean, I mean, I don't hear phone calls from the seniors so many that their ta- their taxes have increased. This garbage thing though is a different deal. And what is that? Their taxes have increased. And they're still paying that. But then, so I think this is just a small token. And I think the ones that can afford it can pay it. So I'm, I'm not, I mean, I'm, I'm far giving them showing a good faith. And I, and sure, what if we bill now, but re-advertise and bill, we're gonna change it. There's nothing that says we can't do that, Kim.
Oh, no, you, you are.
We're locked in.
You, you're welcome, you're welcome to change your rate at your whim. You just have to go through the notification requirements.
I'm sorry. I thought you was talking about the service that we're.
No, 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 no. Yeah, I know what you're saying. No, we.
Yes, sir. But the, the issue for us, Jared, becomes more the timing. We bill quarterly.
I know.
And our next quarter starts two weeks, basically two weeks from today. And, uh, i- if we are going to bill beginning April one, we gotta know what are we gonna put on that bill?
Okay, well, I'm getting it. If you bill that now, then, and we, you give us time for the next quarter, we could show that difference.
Yes, sir.
And we could, I could put the word out that you'll be seeing some difference. You, you'll be seeing this cost in the next quarter. This quarter, we can't change it.
If that's, if that's what the board wishes to do, yes, sir, we can move through a process that lets y'all.
That, it could be done.
It could, it could. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Hey Craig, why are you, why are you there? I mean, I know we're on a contract for six years, but after the third year, I mean, if, if Rankin County happens to put in a transfer station.
Yes, sir.
What, I mean, could you go back out for bids or, I mean, are we locked in for six years?
Yeah, I, I think unless our current provider is in, in a fault position under the contract, Brad, we probably are not gonna be able to do that. Uh, my hope would be, and probably the best outcome would be that our current provider would want to sit down with us and talk about the, the change in the dynamics and how they can do garbage collection in Rankin County. It would seem to me that it would be advantageous to our current provider to be able to access a facility like that, assuming it could be stood up.
Forty-five or something.
But I don't believe we're gonna be able to just bypass the current contract unless they are somehow in default.
I got you.
So we can tell them, we're gonna adjust it and I'll show them the next quarter billing.
You know, I, I, I made this point yesterday. Uh, one of our media representatives asked for an interview and I made the point, I don't think it actually made the cut. It's on the cutting room floor at the news station. Uh, but I, I pointed out that our current provider, uh, because of the way that they have structured their operations. Every loaded garbage truck that comes out of Rankin, unincorporated Rankin County that has, that is full and has to be, uh, has to be emptied so that another load can be acquired. They run trucks. They run trucks. They run trucks. Every one of those loaded trucks has to go all the way to West Jackson to unload. That is a huge fuel cost. That's an equipment cost. Why? Because it's wear and tear on the vehicles. And they're paying those workers to ride. Uh, so, uh, addressing this issue of a point, a, a place in Rankin County where collected solid waste could be staged for later disposal, I think is a valid consideration that this board is already looking at and needs to continue to pursue. That would be a, that would cause a downward force on their actual costs to do their work. They don't have to run all the way to West Jackson to unload. They can unload much closer, much closer to the end game.
Right.
And so your, your, your turnaround time rapidly increases.
Right.
The number of employees, employees that you need goes down, the number of vehicles, trucks you need goes down, the routes can be shortened. Uh, things can be made more efficient. I think that is a wise consideration. The board needs to pursue that. And I appreciate the fact that it is being pursued. And my hope is that at some point, if we do identify a location that works best for everybody, that we can get good buy-in from everybody, even if they're not county government.
Right.
I'd like to hope we can get some cooperation there, so all of our citizens are benefited from a facility.
It's gonna be a savings.
Yes, sir.
I mean, obviously.
And, and, and I think that our current provider, we have a, a strong enough relationship with our current provider that they would be willing to sit down and talk to us about potential adjustments that help everybody, them and us.
Right.
So we don't have an alternative at the moment. So guys, to, to sum it up, so I can quit talking, y'all can get around to doing what you need to do here. If, if, if there's gonna be a change, we need to note today, that's number one. If you're gonna make a change in the current policy or procedure as espoused already and as published already, we gotta add it to the agenda and act on it officially today. That's first. Second, if you do decrease the senior rate in any way, you need to decide whether you're gonna increase the regular rate to offset that decrease, uh, and then expect the repercussions of that that we'll probably be talking about next board meeting.
I don't know. I hadn't had, I hadn't heard one yet.
Well, I have.
Have you?
Yes, absolutely. About the race going up, who, who wants to pay that much for garbage?
On, on.
Well, I mean, it's a ripoff. Yeah.
Both sides.
I mean, it's a total ripoff that we're having to pay this much. But unfortunately, we have one bidder and, you know, we, we have to get garbage picked up. So, I mean, I think this definitely makes us want to look at alternatives in the future. And we need to get at it now.
Quick.
I agree. I agree with that. But currently where we stand now, are you, are you willing to help do anything where the senior's concerned?
Well, ain't that, I'm not willing. I don't think we have a choice, man, because we, everybody's paying.
Well.
I mean, we'd have to get.
I'm, I'm for helping them, helping the seniors.
I think everybody on this board is willing.
Yeah, I think if we voted, it'd be two to two and it'd be locked up and we wouldn't make any progress. Because I'm not, I mean, if, if somebody says, give a senior. Yeah, nobody wants to hurt the seniors.
Well, then I think we need to do something to try to help them.
Well, it.
I mean, my motion would be, my motion would be to lower theirs. I'd like to see it go to forty-five.
Well, I'd love for it to be free.
But I mean, if it went, if it, if, if you split it down the middle, it would go to fifty. And then you could publish it just like you're doing, go and pay it this time, but let notice be made that we're gonna, that you will see.
That we changed our buy, we were kidding.
You will see a discount in next quarter.
But we'd have to, I mean, Keith is gonna have to go back, figure out how many senior citizens are getting a discount. How many is gonna wanna come up here and get the discount? Because, I mean, you can't take that.
Well, if they're senior citizens, they'll give it.
A lot of folks don't notice. They gotta come up here, fill out an application. That's not good government. I don't think that's not good business.
I don't, I'm, I'm with Jared a hundred percent. And I've had the calls and emails.
Oh, I have too.
But.
But I'd.
I don't know. I, I.
Explain it.
And if somebody.
I didn't leave the phone.
If somebody called me and said, I can't make my garbage payment, I would try to make it for them. Not Rankin County, I don't need every one of you to do that to me.
I'm just saying, okay, if you split it in the middle, if we had just split it down the middle, they at least been paying fifty, you've got a twenty-five dollar increase.
Yeah, I know, but they had to, they had to balance and.
Anyway.
To make it.
I told them I'd give it a shot and I gave it a shot.
And, and I'm, I think now.
What I believe, but anyway, it's what it is.
Well, you know, if we're gonna do all that, I believe we should have had a once a week pickup and we would have a heck of a savings. You know, we wouldn't have this.
I asked, I did ask, ask numerous people about that and they agree, uh, in the rural area, uh.
Well, the bad thing.
It's gonna need to be two.
Is if you go to once a week and they don't pick it up.
Well, I'm saying in, in a.
It's going roadside.
You miss it, they gonna throw it.
It's going roadside.
Yep.
Yeah, I was, I'm saying, and maybe in a, in a, uh, maybe, I don't know if you get by in a municipality-type surrounded area. I don't know. Uh, but I think two is best, obviously.
But you're paying for it.
Well, but we're getting a better deal than some other surrounding counties have got. Twelve ninety to sixteen ninety, we got two, two days, and they got one day.
I don't know. I, I just know that whenever we were looking at this, that the one-day week, uh, was the best option in my mind. And, you know, I know out in the rural part of the county, it would be difficult. But I think people would, would adjust. They would learn. They do it all over the country. Matter of fact, they're doing it right now in North Mississippi, all through the Delta. They're all once a week, you know? That ain't nothing but rural.
I, I think that's something that we may have to go to on our next.
Right.
Round.
Bigger can.
Well.
And not only that, I think if we could, if we do that, we'll get more bidders too.
Yep.
Really?
Yeah.
Yep. We, we, we don't realize the service that we get until you break it down like Craig did to less than three dollars. And, um.
Yes, sir.
Anyhow, uh, I don't, I can't change the price of gas and I don't think we can change the price of garbage.
Yep. And we can't change how waste management pays their people.
Right.
That's not our deal. That's their deal.
It's, we can just do the best job we can do economically with just five guys, uh, taking taxes and paying bills.
So it's fees, uh, and I, I, I think people may misunderstand. I don't want the nomenclature to get people confused. It's not a tax. It's a fee for service.
Yep.
Uh, and so it's a totally different ballgame.
That's right.
But we do have notice requirements that we had to put out. So gentlemen, we have put the notices out. They've been published. We, we've given as much information as I, as humanly possible, trying to explain what we're doing and why. Uh, y'all are dealing with the repercussions of that and I, that's why I want to say, I, I apologize for my part in your pain. Uh, I get it. We're all suffering from that part of this reality that we don't, that the change has been visited upon us. Guys, the, the current CPI, the current, it, it's, 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 it's messaged as if it's the inflation rate. Those things are not exactly the same. But the CPI currently is clipping at between eight and ten percent annually. So I'm at least thankful that y'all were wise enough to see the need to stick to your guns on your max CPI increase in your contract. We at least are not going to go over a four percent rate increase in any year throughout the life of this contract, praise the Lord. And we just don't know what the future may hold. My hope and prayer is that the CPI will continue to go down as things stabilize. We'll see. But at least we know we're gonna be capped at that four percent rate increase for the life of the contract. And so I'm grateful that y'all were smart enough to keep that in there and to hold to your guns. Keep in mind that our, our provider didn't want that CPI max in there. So I, I'm thankful we held our guns on that and, uh, so, uh, we're here to try to help any way we can. We provide any, any information y'all need is provided.
Any, any more additional business?
No.
Not quite.
I just, I just still think we're dropping a ball, but that's all right.
All right.
I did what I, did what I do.
I'm gonna say, Jared, you, you can dang sure say you fault.
Yeah, well.
And, and I'm with you. I just don't know how to do it. All right.
Is there a need for executive?
Unfortunately, Mr. Vice President, I've got three matters that I need to discuss in executive. They're litigation related.
So make a motion to discuss the need for executive session.
Say it.
All in favor?
Aha.
Close. I make a motion on executive session for litigation.
Say it.
And personnel.